brought us um yeah Ward six candidates and
Molly had mentioned you had had a chance
pending all
wrap this up on it
for uh raising your hand and wanting to be one of our leaders. I appreciate it as the person
on our Ward six candidate forum.
With that, I'm going to turn it over to our moderators, Rick Gold and Eric Brownlow.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone, and uh, welcome to the Ward six virtual candidate forum. Uh, we're going to do our best to make sure we give everybody time here today. And we're going to start doing that by giving you the opportunity to introduce yourself uh to the attendees and to the community at large, if they have a chance to watch the recording of this uh candidate forum uh after we are able to publish it publicly. And based upon the folks that I can see, I'm going to go around the horns first here and start off with uh Tom. Uh, please introduce yourself.
Afternoon, greetings, and thank you to the Rochester area builders and Southeast Minnesota Realtors for hosting this virtual town hall and candidate forum. I'm Thomas Rigby, and I'm asking that you vote for me for the position of city councilperson from Ward six. The questions that have been submitted are difficult and insightful. I don't know how the previous groups have done at answering them or what my fellow candidates will say. But I will say upfront that I probably don't have all the answers or all the right answers. Or along the way, maybe the facts will change and there will be a different right answer. But first and foremost, my door and my email and my phone will always be open to those of you from the Rochester area builders and Southeast Minnesota Realtors who think things could be done a better way and wish that wish to discuss that better way with me. Secondly, some of your questions expose societal problems or supply and demand problems that only good faith, effort, and patience fix. That may not be the happiest of answers, but if we face the issue straight on with open dialogue, we can get to the answers that help us form the more perfect place to live all want. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Dennis.
Thank you. I was joking a little bit. I'm glad that government is about people because sometimes technology is a little bit. Uh, so I haven't actually looked over the questions too uh early uh until just today. But um, I do want to say that uh this is a time in our lives of democracy is very fragile and advocacy is very dangerous. And I have taught overseas and had experience to see that we need to be all involved. I encourage everyone to reach out to their community, reach out to neighbors across the street, across town, help them vote, to help vote, to get involved, to make sure they're okay. Like I mentioned before with my neighbor, just um here in Ward six, who ended his life due to lack of hope. Uh, mental health is a serious issue, and I would like to also say that having uh experience with that, I volunteered for Mayo Hospital for over eleven years in a uh healing camp for children. And there I built places where uh we can deep listening, we validate challenges, we connect uh in shared experiences. And that's what we need to do with housing and infrastructure as well. We need to have the invisible thread of equality, the environment, always in the core of every decision we make. I I believe it goes beyond issue. The environment is a way of uh protecting the one planet we live on, the way of thinking, and having um equity and justice in every single decision we make. So I want to say that we need to rethink the idea of uh infrastructure of how and where we live and maybe look at how the wealth and without income. It doesn't become such a um uh a property, uh it doesn't become competitive sport where uh we put all our um emphasis that our investments are in property. I really believe it's a place to live and we allow everyone to have that opportunity. So I appreciate having forums like this. I believe educators of myself are natural innovators and um we use different tools for diverse learning and want to collaborate and connect people. Brilliant minds, because I'm not a builder. I like Tom, won't have all the answers. But I truly believe that we can find them with deep collaboration with all agents and create a mind to find them. So I I'm running for office to amplify the voice of the unrepresented, to empower your voice and use trust to power. Because my children and everyone's children, it's a beautiful future that we can all succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Todd, you are up next.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, first, I want to thank uh Rochester area builders and the Southeast Minnesota Realtors for hosting this this event. I and I believe it's an honor to be considered for a position in public office. I also believe that my background is well suited for the for this position. Uh, again, most of my adult life, I've been a public servant. I've been an army officer. I'm retired from the army with twenty years of active duty service. I'm a Gulf War veteran. I also served as an auditor with the Minnesota Office of Legislative Auditor. I've been a corporate manager. I've even led a workforce running part of a steel plant. I also hold the license and certificates of a certified public accountant and a certified fraud examiner. I'm generally involved in the local community. I'm a board member of uh the Lotus Health Foundation and and I'm an honorary member of the Korean Rochester's Korean War Veterans Club. Uh, I'm focused on the development of goals identified for the common good and the strategy and policies to implement to achieve those goals. You may have seen on my website, I've called my campaign Call to Action. And I basically identified three key elements to strengthen our community, create the conditions for economic diversity and growth, and to stabilize our small businesses through the COVID crisis and beyond. But we need to have a city government that is accountable and responsive to the residents and the business community. City government supposed to work for the residents and exist for the residents. We need to make sure that our government works for us, not the other way around. I believe the residents are the experts and know how best uh when it comes to setting priorities and how best to run the government. When the residents want or need a new bridge, I believe we need to call that civil engineer. We may even need that civil engineer to tell us we need the new bridge. But we shouldn't wait four or five years to have a bridge replaced. Stabilize property taxes. Enough is enough and function. We need to start to function within our constraints. There's enough burden on the taxpayer and our businesses. What we need to do is review and establish our priorities. That's how we live in our households. Many of our residents have established a business here in Rochester, so we need to protect our small businesses. The problem is there's only so much liquidity available and so much debt a business owner can obtain or may be willing to accept. I say this because our businesses employ Rochester residents. They invest in Rochester and they provide many of the products and services that make Rochester thrive. Again, this is not an easy task, especially moving through and to an eventual, what I call, post-COVID economic framework. This framework is something that the new council will have to look at. Now, my number one item in my platform is to create the condition to diversify the economic base. Right now, all our eggs are in one basket. Rochester comprehensive plan as as a central focus of the DMC area, the downtown. There is no second or third priority the city is working. Now, that just makes our economy fragile. How many more times will the headline read, another business in downtown Rochester is closing forever, as it has again today? We need to change this all eggs in one basket economic strategy and policy in business areas of industrial and business parks. This reduces the overall development cost to the businesses in those cars. Also goes to help to protect our environment with the proper infrastructure. So we need to become inclusive and balcony to those businesses and operate and operate out one sector in the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bailey, you are up.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
All right, thank you. And again, I apologize for my technical difficulties. Want to thank the R A B and S E M R for this awesome opportunity to be a part of your forum. Uh, I learned much and just going over your questions, um and it gave a greater perspective with what I think. And I'm going to call this a crisis, although it's not a crisis. I think it's more of a crisis, if you will, I'm using that as a big word for our middle to lower income folks, and that is the issue of housing. Um, and it's an issue that's come up over and over again on the campaign and these forums. And I love the way you are going about it and what I've learned through the process. I've been in Rochester for about twenty years. I'm a social worker here. Have worked in various capacities. I work at the Public Defender Office. As a social worker, I've volunteered in various areas such as the Council for Minotones of African Heritage. I'm currently on the Third District Equal Justice Committee. Educationally, I have a master's in educational leadership and working on my PhD in social and community services. Uh, again, I've volunteered everywhere throughout the community, and my platform is about cultural competency, big C, making sure that all of our efforts, whether it be housing or what have you throughout the city, we're making sure we're taking care of everyone as we grow into this great place that we are. So I'm excited to be here. Thank you for inviting me to this forum. And I look forward to uh answering your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and I believe our final candidate for introductions is uh Craig Uglan. Craig?
Uh, yes, thank you. So there's three, three parts of my uh of my program tonight that I would like everybody to remember. Number one is I'm here to regain the trust of our city council. Number two, to improve the communication and cooperation between the city government, uh other city government entities, and our public community. And number three, I want to ask you for your vote on August eleventh. I was born and raised in Rochester, uh grew up on Eleventh Avenue and Alton Hills Drive. Uh, left for college uh in a few uh employment opportunities and wanted to come back to raise my family. I've been in the construction and real estate business for over twenty-five years, uh including uh roles as project manager, estimator, sales, and as a Realtor for the last six years. I believe that my experience in the construction industry is will will be a great uh relationship builder uh between myself, the city council, and uh these different entities in Rochester, including our clients, uh contractors, developers, um and the community as a whole. Some of my goals in the construction industry uh while sitting on the city council would be to streamline the entire process and for the city to back away from oversight. Still ensure that everything is being done safely, but get out of the way and let builders and developers do what Rochester needs. And that's to build affordable market rate housing and uh some subsidized housing. So again, I would like to uh regain trust within our uh community with our city council. Um, I'm asking for you for more information, you can visit voteuglan.com, get more of my bio there, and asking for your excuse me, asking for your vote on August eleventh. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Craig. And with our first question, uh I will kick us off. Uh, and Molly had mentioned you had had a chance, so I'm going to put you on the spot with this one. Uh, with the severe housing shortage that Rochester is facing, what do you believe are the best steps the city could take to address the issue and do you believe they should play an active role in addressing the housing shortage in all segments of the market?
All right. Thank you so much. Yes, I have not had a chance to look over the questions though. Um, so this is really just authentic, which I think transparency is trust. If you see my website, you'll see that I definitely lay it all out. I try to normalize and connect. Um, I I have worked in Washington DC and I know that there this is a housing crisis. Uh, we do not have enough affordable housing. First, we need to look at what the definition of affordable is. Sometimes developers think, well, affordable is a a cost that people can buy it at. But I did a little research um back about uh like the kind of ballpark HUD has said about thirty percent of a person's income. Uh, so if you make thirty thousand dollars, that means your rent is going to be seven hundred and fifty. That's affordable housing. You need rent at seven hundred and fifty. That's quality housing. Because if you have housing that's substantial, it's not very um, you know, flimsy, you're going to have the upkeep. Just the cost of maintenance is going to affect uh people being able to live there. You have to look at location, 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 uh because it needs to be near affordable uh access to uh public transportation. It has to be uh healthy food, a green space. We have to look at how we do the environment. Um, there we don't want just net zero. We want net positive uh with everything we do. We want to look at not just the green bling. I mean, like looking, the green bling would be uh solar panels. That's that's okay. Yeah, throw those on. That's great. But I I think we should look at the foundation, have engineers working with um with our architects to design, maybe co-op, amazing ways of reventing. Like I mentioned a little bit in my intro uh about uh redefining what affordable how uh what um what we mean by housing, a place to live, not an investment. Because we want to make sure that we can have everyone have a place to live. This is the community, a community is taking care of each other. So I I guess for the steps, I'm not a builder. Uh, so I would have to, this is experts. I would love it if the developers came to the roundtable with on equal terms with the community and and help the underrepresented have a voice, amplify the voices of the quiet, which are the children in the environment that cannot make their picketing signs. I want everyone at the roundtable so that we all can discuss the options, so people like me who are an educator, an essential worker, can afford housing in our town. And I I'm a very, very passionate person that believes that by redefining and seeing the needs of our community, we can achieve a housing for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis. And now, uh, Mr. Bailey, you are up next. We were getting a touch of intermittent interference on your mic. And so we had muted it, and I believe uh John is unmeeting you now, or if you can unmute yourself as well. Uh, we now have you on video as well.
How's it going now? It's good?
Excellent. I can hear you clearly.
Okay, great. Um, uh, the question, my answer is, first of all, I think the steps that need to be taken is we need to look at the overall philosophy of what's going on in Rochester and our greater region as it relates to housing. DMC is great, and it's been great, but we need to get to an idea where we're going to work with the middle and lower class and figure out what's going to work around them. As I've talked to voters and in these various forums, we've talked about affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing. We need to get a philosophy around what we want to do in regards to that first. And that that is a philosophy of how we're going to work forward with DMC in mind, but also with the middle to lower class in mind as it relates to housing. Upon that philosophy and whatever that would be as a as a city council, I believe high density housing has to come in there somewhere, depending on where we go. Uh, we would love to build more single-family units and some of those things, but if we really want to reach out in 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 an affordable way to the essential workers and those folks coming in that will support the DMC, we need to get the high density idea in there somewhere. And then lastly, I would work on a collaboration with Almside County and the greater uh area cities to met to help with this housing situation. Um, I do believe to answer the question that the city should jump in there to help out, but I believe one is is the philosophy. We really need to adopt what we want to do about this issue of housing. It is at a crisis level, at least for the middle to lower class. Um, high density housing, we have to bring in eventually. And then we need to collaborate with Almside County and the other cities around this region to to help with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Craig, you are up next.
Yes, uh, sorry about that. And I will apologize now. Um, the reason I'm on a phone call and not video is because I'm camping and I'm looking at the confluence of the Wisconsin and Mississippi rivers. Uh, so I'm a little uh distracted at the moment. But uh regarding our affordable housing shortage, you know, um, the city has made some improvements with getting some of the subsidized multi-unit housing. But when we look at single-family housing, I think we need to have a different approach, and that different approach is getting that step-down housing for our seniors to be more affordable. Um, I've talked with a lot of our neighbors in Alton Hills and Sunset and Gage areas, and they've been in their homes for thirty or forty years, and they cannot afford to downsize into that next home because that next home is three hundred thousand dollars and up. And I think that we can make those step-down houses much more affordable if the city were were to relax their sewer utility fees and a lot of their permitting fees. You know, thirty or forty thousand dollars a lot for permitting fees is not acceptable. Um, I also think that it would benefit everybody if the city would lower the restrictions as far as home sizes and lot land, similar to the Dewish developments um back in the eighties between East Eighteenth Avenue between Forty-first and uh Forty-Eighth Street, so we can get some more neighborhoods like that. Uh, we need to streamline the permitting process, again, to make things move faster and more affordable. And um, as I mentioned in my opening, the city needs to kind of get out of the way um to let these builders get done what they need to get done. I think we need to be careful with our high-density housing, especially with the COVID crisis that we're going through right now. High density may not be the answer health-wise uh to solve all of our problems. Um, and with the term new new normal that we're probably going to see in the future, Mayo has been pulling some of their non-critical employees out of downtown. So that means that not everybody has to be in that dense core of downtown. And if Mayo and other industries have more satellite locations, kind of like the IBM campus type thing, um, urban sprawl isn't such a bad thing because people won't have to be commuting into downtown and they can commute one or two miles to their placement point. So that's some of my thoughts on how to address our affordable housing shortage.
Thank you. And uh, just as a refresher, uh, when we're asking about the housing shortages as well, uh, it's not necessarily tied directly to affordable housing, but with just housing shortages across the entire broad market with all the panelists we have here today, sometimes a question can get lost in the mix, so I just wanted to reiterate that. Uh, and I believe Tom, you are up next.
Okay, thank you. Regarding specifically to the question, I think one of the things uh that may be most important to this process is getting the land development manual done. Um, where hopefully for all segments of property, um, the rules are clear as to how you go in and you get your permits, your zoning, and all those things that you need, and people can move forward in a faster, more efficient way. I wonder if the city is able to keep up with everything and maybe needs to farm out some of the work. Uh, Rochester is going really fast and it's putting a lot of pressure on the infrastructure here. And maybe it is that the city has to farm out some of that work and the developers have to take more responsibility. I'm not sure what the exact solution is, but thinking about the issue with the school district and not being able to provide services to the property that they wanted to build on for twenty years was the answer that the school district take over the issue uh of doing that. And while that's not housing, it makes you wonder if that could be used in the housing process also. I think the city should be very proactive in identifying and making sure zoning and uh, everything that needs to be done for development sites is done ahead of time. Maybe the city, um, if they can get past their workload, could go out and identify low-income housing areas and help get them set up for the developers to to build on. Um, it's a complex problem. It it's uh maybe the solution is somewhat what Donovan was talking about, which is the city has to work with uh other communities, maybe by outlining transit plans that can bring workers from outside the community and they can uh get live in a different community and commute easier. All those things need to look be looked at, and um, I look forward to uh working on the solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Todd, wrap this up on it. Subject to housing.
You bet. Uh, so it's so really the the demand has really outpaced the supply. And that not only causes the shortage, but it also increases the uh price in what in the housing market and the and also just uh even rentals uh that many others have been talking about. So I think with the Rochester is not going to slow down uh in the near term in terms of growth. So I think we do need to look at the supply side uh and not so much the demand side, because the demand is going to be there. But we can look at increasing the density of planned areas for development. Uh, so those were already on uh on the table for development that aren't yet started. We may need to take a look at those. Uh, we can look at redeveloping the older areas. And instead of putting in that single-family uh house, we may want to plan for multiple families, such as townhomes. We can look at the commercial areas and build up. So that storefront uh are on the ground and the condos or and or the apartments are above. And there's a number of these types that have been built already in the downtown area. And we should look at putting these in the outer areas as well. Uh, but people should, you know, people should not have to travel to the downtown area to go get their cup of coffee in the morning. Uh, I took a look at Realtor.com. Uh, and yeah, a half acre lot, vacant lot. Uh, forty thousand, a point-two acre lot was forty-four thousand, and that was in Slattery Park. Uh, so I I believe a few others are thirty thousand, but this is a multifaceted problem. It's not a single wave of the wand and and solve the solution. Uh, and now I think we do have to look at, uh, there is a shift uh in uh work, uh work from home, work remotely. So I think we also need to say, hey, how is that going to change the housing landscape? What about the families with school-aged children? Are families going to require a remote classrooms in their homes that go beyond, hey, now you have to provide a uh instead of just providing a tube of Elmer's glue, a twelve-pack uh of crayons and a few notebooks? So you know, so we have to start asking now, will households now require an additional one or two rooms for that home office and a suitable learning room? So it's, I don't think it's an easy problem. Uh, but I think we do need to look, focus on that supply side.
Thank you, Todd. And with that, I believe Mr. Brownlow has our next question queued up for our candidates.
Yes, welcome to this afternoon. Um, next, we're going to talk about your opinion on TIP. Uh, the city has steadily increased restrictions associated with accessing TIP for development. Please describe your perspective generally on the use of TIP as a development tool. Uh, additionally, are you concerned that the additional restrictions blunt the potential positive effect that utilizing TIP can have on incentivizing developments? So general thoughts on TIP? And I hope you didn't get too comfortable, Todd, because we're going to start back with you.
Sure. Well, first, I think uh TIP restrictions, you know, the TIP is set up for a purpose. Um, although I I don't believe uh in any new TIP areas uh are practical here for Rochester simply because that property valuation base is so high uh right now. You that incremental uh change uh would be very minimal at 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 best. But I think with uh existing TIPS, the purpose of that TIP is to drive right back into the infrastructure bill uh that made that uh that makes that possible to lower the overall cost. So I I I think uh with TIPS being restrictive, we have to look at what they were set up first to design to do uh and we not to be used for other good, good ideas. I'll call them good ideas. Um, so you go back to the purpose of a TIP.
All right, thank you, Todd. And and Molly, your thoughts on the on on TIP and the recent changes to policy?
Uh, TIP is a great um tool for the city to help incentivize the um uh development of of new uh infrastructure. Um, I would only uh support uh anything with uh TIP if it's um focused on um small businesses and affordable housing. I think the era of big development and hotels, that's done. We don't, we we I I would, I don't think we need to use um incentives for hotels and big development. It needs to be for small businesses to help them through this economic crisis, and it needs to definitely be for affordable housing. Um, I um, and then again, like, I think we speed up a lot of things thinking we need, oh, we need stuff right now. But when we speed up things and we take out inputs from constituents and the community, so I feel like we need to get a balance of making sure everything's done right, make sure we doing, we're doing everything. And there are barriers, uh, look at the hiring practices, make sure that companies that we are contracting with have uh black indigenous people of color, women as owners, uh supporting um progressive livable wages. And what I loved about Todd's rationale is when he was talking a bit, I kind of take notes sometimes when um people are but there there's a lot of variables. Um, and so we're really in an interconnected society, and I think that's And I think that's definitely the lens I look through when I look through everything. I say, well, yes and yes. And if you look at the homeless uh people experiencing homelessness, you have to also look at all of the other transportation for ways, you know, you have to look at the whole uh picture. So I I feel like when it comes to TIP, we need to really be careful on how we spend, you know, wasteful spending. We need to prioritize if we need that project and the project we need our help for small businesses and uh affordable housing. And just to note on affordable housing or what I kind of went into, I I watched a really neat TED Talk on engineering. And we like things like this. This is so fun, you know, they're so pretty, like housing that's pretty. Well, if you want functional, we want to have simple, we want to make sure that the ratio of the wall, the it's like a, what is it, zero-point-three-three uh the wall to um uh you know, you guys are engineers, I'm an educator, ah, you know. But I'm 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 thinking we need to really maximize space and I like the idea of looking at density, looking at how we see the world and have the engineers like with when we look at Riverside versus um um that age. Um when we look at, when we look at the schools, how how efficient, now my mind's going blank and I'm, I work for Riverside, but I when we look at how the new buildings now are more energy efficient and we need to look at all of that. So when we use TIP dollars, that's our voice to be able to say, hey, we approve of this, we want this as a priority because it 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 amplifies uh justice, equity and uh promotes the environment. So, yeah.
All right, all right, thank you. And uh Donovan, your thoughts on the use of TIP? Oh, Donovan, you're in here.
Hold on one second, Donovan, yep. Uh still no audio.
Who are you asking?
Donovan.
Donovan, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, ready?
We got you.
All right, sorry about the technical issues. Well, as we know, TIP is used to create jobs, provide affordable housing, redevelop the declining areas and clean up environmentally contaminated sites. And as I reviewed what the city of Rochester done, we've had a pretty good record with TIPS, helping with affordable housing and jobs and some different things. So I like where the city is at in regards to TIPS. So in the sense of restrictions, I'm not concerned at this point. But what I would do, and I probably would fashion this around every four years when city council members come in, I would be willing to recalibrate how we look at TIPS in the sense of restrictions. Of course, they're used for specific areas as said by federal government, state government. However, what I would be willing to do is, do we need to relook at our TIPS and the restrictions so that they can impact uh the correct areas? So with regard to that, I would say city council, meet with the public, meet with folks like you all. Hey, can we ease restrictions or toughen restrictions to meet the needs right now? So again, I think things are going well, but I I would think that maybe each a four-year term or something to that effect, we can relook at at the TIPS, see if we need to calibrate it differently, up or down restrictions or not, based on what the community says and based on um organizations like yours that can give us feedback, hey, can you can you lessen, can you tighten so we can get some things done in whatever area? Thanks.
All right, thank you, Donovan. And and Tom, next we'll go to you with your thoughts on TIP.
Generally, I'm in favor of the TIP. Um I think it's been a um good tool uh to get the right kind of developments in the right places. Um I think time will tell whether the policies have been tightened too much, uh the emphasis is um too tight and limiting. Uh and if that happens and it can be tweaked and the policies has to be done every four years like Donovan says, or it's a longer period, I just think we need to most important thing coming out of COVID is the small business. And unfortunately, it's very hard, I think, to use TIP on just individual small businesses because it's such an expensive process to go through. Uh so unless we're developing um business parks and such, um it it's not used as well there as it could be other spots. Um I would definitely use it if there's an opportunity on housing. I I certainly think that uh anything we can do to encourage housing is good. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And Craig, we will give you the last word on uh the additional restrictions and initial effects and overall sentiment on TIP financing.
Absolutely. Thanks, Eric. Uh before I get into TIP, I wanted to touch back on my last comment about uh creating affordable housing for our our baby boomers to to step up to. And the reason for that is that it would open up those houses in the Sunset, Own the Hills, Gage areas. Uh and those houses are are really what's what's in the affordable inventory at this point. But we can't get the boomers out of those houses to make them uh available for the market. So now regarding TIP, um I think it's a good plan if it's used appropriately. Um my understanding is that uh TIP should be used uh on items that are to the benefit of the city as a whole. Uh so when it was used downtown, it was to offset costs of a skyway connection. Um or as Donovan had said, for some environmental radiation, you know, for developments, if it's used to maybe supplement park dedication land. Um and uh if it is used to supplement workforce housing, we need to ensure that that money that's saved by the developer is passed on to the buyers. Um I've been working on a project outside of Rochester where the developer was receiving grants for homes sold to houses under a certain amount of family income. Um and I'll guarantee you that the price of those houses, those families could not afford that if they were below this level of uh family income. So if that is a route that we need, that we decide to go, we need to be very diligent with those funds and make sure that they're passed on to um the end user and not just in the pocket of developers. Um not saying that developers aren't um supposed to be making money, that's that's why they're doing what they do. But if we're using our TIP money to do uh to make things affordable, that of course needs to be passed on appropriately. So thanks, Eric.
All right, thank you, Craig. And thank you all, all to the candidates, and I'll pass it back to Craig. Uh a a recent topic of discussion has been short-term rentals. And the city of Rochester has recently regulated short-term rentals and past policies tied to that that will treat short-term rentals more like apartments with a mixture of licensing that would be similar to hotels potentially from a property tax. Can you please provide, generally speaking, uh your views on the regulation of short-term rentals uh in the city of Rochester? And I think the easiest way to do this is for me to turn it right back to Craig and work right back the other direction.
Thanks much. Uh so my opinion on short-term rentals is that they are very important and they fill a very important niche for the people that are using them, which is, I think, pretty easy to say, a lot of their users are clinic visitors. Um it's a much more affordable option for long-term stays, uh both in cost of staying there and uh food, because the visitors aren't having to eat out every night as they would be in a hotel room. They're also much more comfortable for those patients and their families to stay in uh as opposed to a hotel room where you have shared walls with other guests. Um and with what we're going through right now, as was mentioned earlier, they're they're better for social distancing, especially with those patients that are here for maybe uh long-term as in a few months for uh cancer treatment and such. It keeps them away from public areas in uh hotels and higher-density facilities. Um I think that we need to be very careful on how the city regulates it. I don't think they should be regulated the same as hotels because they're not the same as hotels. You know, maybe a middle ground is regulating them the same as long-term apartments. I don't think, or sorry, typical apartment rentals. Um I don't think that the city should use those as a funding source to uh put more money in the coffers. Um you know, if you, there are some downfalls to short-term rentals. Um one of them is that they do tend to gobble up some of the affordable housing and uh we need to be careful that they are meeting minimum safety requirements. So that's why um I feel that they should be regulated uh similarly to apartments um and long-term rentals as opposed to hotels.
Thank you, Craig. Uh Tom, you are up next.
All right. Um I'm fine with the um short-term rental um market being available and being licensed. Uh I won't reiterate all of what Craig said. He said it very well as far as what the uses can be and and how they can be used. Um I do believe they should be licensed and regulated um to a certain extent, um especially for the safety of the people coming to them and for the safety of the neighborhoods where they're located. I I think that's very important that the the licensing rules look to those issues. And if there's lots of complaints for some reason, if some house turns into a party house or something goes wrong with the the way it's going, um complaints can be lodged and the city can look into it. Um but I I've stayed in short-term rentals in other cities. I I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Tom. Uh Donovan, you are up next. Oh, Donovan, your audio is not working presently.
There we go. Man, um as I look at short-term housing, it's obviously a byproduct of Mayo. It it is, we are the uh largest employer of Minnesota, uh obviously the largest employer of Rochester and it's our main industry. So short-term ha- short-term housing is a byproduct of uh the engine of our town. So with regard to that, certainly I'm supportive of short-term housing. Um as I've read and studied, it does have some impact on affordable housing and that's something that the city council and other entities can calibrate to make sure that it's not having the impact um that we want on that as we seek, as we grow in this affordable housing thing. It's huge. But again, um uh residents come here and they need short-term housing as they're here for what, a year or two uh before they become a full-time doctor. Obviously, uh various patients come here for short and long-term, but only temporary, and they need those stays. So with regard to the obvious, if will, um I'm definitely supportive of short-term housing as it is, again, a byproduct of the main industry of our town and the largest employer of the state of Minnesota. But if we can relook at it and make sure that it's not offsetting some of our other concerns and balance that with the public, I think we can uh move forward with it growing however it needs to. Thank you.
Thank you. And Molly, you are up next.
Sorry. So um I wanted to say, back when I was talking about, I found my notes on the TED Talk, so sorry, I didn't have the stats, but okay. But back for us, I have friends who do this for living here in town, who um do short-term um rentals. And if it's done right, uh with the right management, it's phenomenal, it's wonderful. Uh um because like it mentioned, we're in Rochester, we have a unique uh environment where we want people to feel safe and included. Just um the issues that I believe maybe Donovan mentioned with affordable housing, I agree when it when it uh is associated with bed and breakfast, when you do the Airbnbs. We do not want to push affordable housing outside of the the urban sprawl is terrible. We want to, you know, for the environment, for patients, for a lot of the assu- assuers. Um we want to keep housing, uh you know, reserved, especially uh when we do um looking at the resources, location, location, location. So as long as um uh the the rentals are not kicking up uh portable housing uh real estate, I think, you know, I think it's wonderful. Um I know uh my friends say from two weeks to two years, people come and rent from all over the world because of the residency, the the, you know, Mayo Clinic, the patients. I I have a friend who comes uh every couple of months to have uh he has an organ transplant, uh the gift of life house. And um it's a safety issue, definitely. You don't want to be around anyone else when you are healing from uh situations that are are dire. Um a kind of a little side note, uh because I'm all about that, about connections. Um I donate blood and I found out my friend who comes, he probably got my blood, which is in my hometown back in Rappi. And I feel like we need to look at the connections. I'm like, wow, I donated right before you needed your transplant. That's amazing. You got my blood. So I want everyone to go and donate blood, okay, be be a connection in the community. But when it comes to um back to uh the the uh short-term rentals, I think um we need to look at um um yeah, the affordable housing connection, but overall it's a great idea to safety from COVID and make people feel at home. And we want people to be a part of the community, which is what I think everyone, Rochester, mental health, everything is is based on. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Todd, to to wrap us up on the subject of short-term rentals.
Yeah, so I I think that there's a tax question embedded in this question as to what tax rate short-term rentals uh should receive. And I've spoken to a number of people, I know a number of people who have uh since moved together uh or uh maybe out of the area and instead of selling uh their house or condo, they've decided to uh hold it and place it on uh a platform like Airbnb. And they've told me that they have had no vacancies uh going out uh into the near future. Uh so the demand, when we think about this, the demand is for a home setting, right? Where a family member uh might be receiving treatment at Mayo uh or could be for a visiting family member who's uh returning for a period of time to maybe visit family such as uh the birth of a new grandchild. Uh but it's a place to uh isolate peacefully. Uh the settings are more accommodating than a hotel. Meals can be prepared that uh you don't need to order out all the time. Uh people can maintain their cultural meals that may not be available elsewhere and they can uh comfortably uh socially uh isolate. Uh and these rentals are qualified, they're inspected and they've met safety standards. But also those platforms that they uh uh like Airbnb, those are regulated too uh in terms of uh satisfactory. So the units are are looked at, they're uh they're generally cleaned uh or or cleaned. And and those comments, the people make those comments to those platforms like Airbnb, those mean something. Uh now, my views uh on this, uh uh there is a need for these, uh otherwise the the demand would not be so strong. But what I'm not necessarily a fan about uh is if someone comes in to purchase existing uh uh housing units in the residential areas that has been designated as uh single-family homes and they establish a business entity for the purpose of these short-term units. Uh so perhaps a cap on the number of units before uh an operation becomes a a commercial-like operation. But I I I just think that uh many of these uh blur the zoning rules uh from residential to a commercial-type operation. So I'm not certain if uh that's fair to the surrounding neighbors uh either. Uh but uh there is a need, uh but uh it does need to be uh monitored that we're not stripping um needed housing from our permanent residents as well.
Thank you, Todd. Okay, I know we're running right up against the five o'clock hour, but we started a little, is everybody good with one more question? All right, we've had a lot of focus on development and infrastructure in the core downtown of Rochester. Um should and can the city support developments outside of that downtown area core? So I guess kind of a two-parter. Um do you think they should? And if so, what can they do? Um and Donovan, we're gonna start uh with you.
Hey, thank you. Um you know, when when DMC started, the original idea and everything got uh was unfolding, I think, uh at least from my standpoint, the idea seemed to be a trickle-down idea. If we build it, they will come, right? And if we build this great DMC, the trickle-down will be that uh other businesses will grow and the city will grow. And and we're seeing a residual impact of DMC, no question. But I think in the process of doing just DMC, we've forgotten other folks and the trickle-down really hasn't trickled down, at least quickly, I'll say that. And as I've talked with voters and I've said this before and various other people, we need to reemphasize what we're doing to the middle with the middle lower income. And that includes businesses, pushing businesses out, opening um other businesses, attracting other businesses to our town, other major businesses. I think we need to do that. We shouldn't, and I'm stealing this from Todd, Todd has been a great uh champion of this. We should not be a one-horse town if we don't have to be with Mayo. And in that regard, we need to get more uh diversified business in town because it would affect everybody. Trickle-down, I'll use that word again, in the sense that diversified jobs and housing and all these issues that we've been talking about. So I love the fact that DMC is here and what has what has happened, but as they forecasted the twenty-eight thousand jobs that will come by twenty-thirty-four, um I think we need to reemphasize, take a couple of steps back and let DMC do its thing and support it. But ask ourselves, what can we do? But ask ourselves, what can we do for the middle lower class? That needs more small businesses, diver- diversify business and go with another direction. It needs to be calculated with steps to begin to get this done because the voters, at least the ones I'm talking to, feel left behind with DNC and all of this stuff. And we need to get a calculated effort with chunks, with landmarks to get things done in regards to the middle lower class and getting more businesses in town. Thank you.
All right, thank you Donovan. And we're gonna move next to uh to Todd.
Yeah, first, uh I want to thank Donovan for uh 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 calling me out on that because as you know, this has been one of the main cornerstones of my platform. And Rochester should be able to offer its young adults a reason and an opportunity to remain here in Rochester. This means the opportunity outside of one sector, the healthcare, and outside of one area, the downtown. Um so I I think we need to offer something more than uh some non-sustainable low wage jobs that DNC and the city's comprehensive plan has promised and delivering on those. So first, I believe we should look at identifying several areas as industrial and business parks. We need to diversify our economic base away from that one sector and one employer. The advantages of doing this are are telling potential businesses, hey, you are welcome here in Rochester. That Rochester does not discriminate against the business community for what goods or services you provide to the community and we really are inclusive. Now, this lowers the overall cost of infrastructure to build to those who may want to locate in those uh areas, in those parks because those costs are shared and the infrastructure can be tailored to include the right technology that may not exist in the standard infrastructure to keep our environment safe. The second item we can do is look at our neighboring communities and partner with them to develop and share the cost of development. So many people talk about diversifying our economic base. I mean, the mayor's webpage uh even has uh diversified the economy as initiative, but no one, including the mayor, uh has taken any uh action. So I'll step up and I'll assist the mayor in this effort to help bring a diversified economic base to the city of Rochester and get Rochester out of the basement for being, uh thank you for using the 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 words that I have. A one horse show. Uh industry brings many other advantages, opportunities with well-paying jobs and benefits, opportunities for our young adults can look forward to rather than what the DNC promises. And it also reduces Rochester's risk when one sector or one employer experience a negative impact. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Todd. And then uh just just your keeping track, we're gonna go Craig, Molly, and Tom will finish us out. And again, the question is, can the city and or should the city support development outside of the downtown core area? Craig?
Thanks, Eric. Uh absolutely. Uh as Todd had said, you know, a diverse uh economy is crucial to a healthy healthy city. Um Ward Six actually has a complete mix of zoning um on the west end of our our ward, you know, by Costco and some of the Mayo Support Services buildings. Um but we definitely need to in invite and incentivize other businesses coming to Rochester, whether it's um other medical businesses, you know, COVID. Hey, let's get our medical supplies made in our country. Let's not depend on China for that stuff. Um we've lost some pretty major manufacturing jobs with the closure of Ampe Kemp's and Seneca. Um we need to pull in similar jobs to those, um and of course, industrial and whatnot as well. Um and whether it's tax incentives, utility incentives, we need to pull these businesses into town instead of pushing businesses out of town, which another candidate in another race had mentioned himself. He had to move out of town because his taxes were going up so high, he couldn't afford to simply stay in Rochester. Um and I think that uh to tie in with that, is our city needs to um prioritize the use of our money with our local contractors and local consultants. Our town is notorious for spending money without its own businesses. Let's bring that money back into town and support those local contractors, architects, engineers and designers. Um so those are my my thoughts on supporting businesses other than Mayo.
All right, thanks a lot. Uh Molly?
All right, yeah, I agree with all the diversification of uh different options of, you know, connecting to more growth in many sectors. Uh yes, if, if it's needed. I really, really, really believe that we need to cut wasteful spending, but just not throwing money everywhere. We need to make sure that we're gonna look at where it can help the small businesses the most and um and and do that. I look at some of the funding that was taken out of our ward uh because of some of the projects that were uh changed with uh the Elton Hills um situation happening. Uh so I mean, when you look at how money is being, where it's going, what words. Uh this is another example of why we need to focus. Uh Annalisa, who Johnson, who is our current uh uh council member, she could, you know, the balancing of the full time job. This is a full time position at at the city council and uh to to try to hold uh, it's more than forty hours, I imagine. If you're gonna actually research options, talk to people, connect. So I believe when you look at that, we need to have, and I and I talked to some school board members, regularly scheduled quarterly public meetings to look at these options, to connect and the needs, to talk to the community. And I believe that when we um when it comes to uh splash pads and putting in basketball hoops and enriching areas where we can connect and have mental health and 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 healing from this epidemic of trauma that we're experiencing is important. So yes, we need to make sure different projects come to the ward. But a strong core is a strong city. I love DNC, what they're doing downtown, and I believe that we need to support um uh both, we need to be connected. Uh so yes, I I do, I believe it's not mutually exclusive. We can help downtown and we can help our neighborhoods have success with all businesses. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Molly. And Tom, last word.
Thank you. I will take a little bit narrower focus on this question, um which is a I would note that the people of Rochester in the state of Minnesota six, seven years ago agreed that it was worthwhile to keep Mel Mayo. So they allocated five hundred million dollars from sales tax um to help with in- infrastructure while Mayo um did their own construction on new buildings and such, but they were gonna need the support of the infrastructure. So that money doesn't come out of this city of Rochester budget. Um it's specially set aside for what it's doing. So I think that we just need to stop blaming DNC or the troubles it's causing. It was a united effort by the state to do this. Um market forces are going to drive where other companies locate and want to develop. If the city, it turns out, has extra money and can use it towards infrastructure, can relax um some of the payment demands for that, I I would be all for that. Um so I just think that it's a um the city should, yes, do everything they can uh by redoing the land use manual, by um offering funds if they have them. But I don't think that it's DNC's fault that they're not doing it. We're just focused on what everybody decided was the number one issue in the state. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. And thank you on behalf of the Southeast Minnesota Realtors uh for your time that you spent here with us this afternoon. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Rick. All right, uh we're coming to a conclusion here. And you all will have the opportunity to provide a closing statement. Uh I do ask the favor that you do your level best to keep it to a minute or we will completely delete you from the entire campaign to the extent of our abilities and mute your call. Uh but I'm just kidding. But please do your best to keep your closing comments uh brief. And with that, we'll start with Tom.
Well, thank you again for hosting this event. Um it's been great to look into these questions and try and provide um reasonable answers to them. Um I just want to remind you that um as a council person, my door, my phone, my email will always be open to you. If you have uh questions about what the city is doing or want to make suggestions about what the city is doing, want to understand, um I really would like to visit with you about them. Um I encourage you to vote on Tuesday if you haven't voted already and encourage you to vote for me, Thomas Rigby. Thanks.
Uh Craig, you are next up.
All right, thank you. And uh I'll keep it under a minute. So uh as I said in my opening, um I just want people to remember three things about me. I'm here to regain regain trust uh from our city council to our community. I'm here to improve communications and cooperation between the city council and all aspects of our community. And I'm asking for your vote on August eleventh. Um I am born and raised in Rochester. My background is in construction and real estate. And I think that um in this group, that would be a huge benefit, especially for what's coming down the pipeline with our land use development redo. Um I feel that um the reason I'm running is because I want to make Rochester to be the best place that it possibly can for us to raise our children and us to support our parents. And we need to be thoughtful of all aspects of government um and its relationship to our community and listening to our community members. So again, I'm here to regain your trust in our city council. I ask you to visit votewegon.com uh for more information on myself and my platform. And I ask for you to vote for me on August eleventh. And again, thank you to RAB and Cmark for hosting tonight's event.
Thank you. Uh Donovan, you are next up.
Yeah, I want to thank RAB and C- and Cmark for hosting this event. It has been a grand opportunity. I've learned a lot in in my run for uh campaigning here. Um and I appreciate this forum. It's been very informative for me as a potential candidate uh for uh Rochester City Council Ward Six. I just want to say, you know, running for for a campaign often intending to work on the negative things, to say, me and I will change, whatever it is. So it happens in other cities and then we have Rochester is a great place to live. We have good problems here. I need leadership to pull folks together um to get things done. And I do think we're a paradigm changer over with affordable housing. It was a small thing and the things that you all bring to the table here was a form. And I would say we just need quality leadership to bring us together on these various issues so we can continue to be to continue to have the number one hospital in the in the in the in the nation and then be one of the number one cities continually. Uh all we need is good leaders to keep the continuous on the same track. Yeah, there's some growing pains, but with good leaders, we can get there. So if you're looking for a leader that can help with those issues and continuous, continuous on our great track while we change, while we grow, while we're more culturally competent, I need Donovan Bailey. And I'm running. Catch me on my website and Facebook as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Donovan. Todd?
Sure. First, uh I want to thank the sponsors uh for this event again. Uh I'm I'm asking the the Ward Six residents to vote for me, Todd Pizarski, honored before August eleventh. Again, my plan is to listen to the residents. I I fully believe the residents are the experts when it comes to setting the priorities uh in their community. Uh now, what differentiates uh me uh from uh some of my fellow candidates? Uh although I am a big uh uh Tom, I am a big fan of uh Mayo Clinic. I've had a couple uh discs on my neck uh and uh replaced there. Also had a hip replacement there. However, when it comes to uh policy, policy does drive economic growth and development. We do need to increase our ranking from the bottom. Uh three twelve, we're ranked three twelve out of three thirteen for the most diversified economies of the largest uh US metro areas. Uh I believe political office is a civic duty and it should not be confused as a career or a profession. I believe the residents' voices are the most important. Uh like Eric said, I uh I'm willing to say enough is enough. We need to live within our our existing budgets and not to seek inventive ways to uh reach into the pockets of the residents by increasing uh taxes uh inventively. Uh residents must come first. Residents should not suffer for the sake of an initiative or a project. Thank you.
Thank you. And Molly, you uh get the final word on our Ward Six candidate forum.
Oh, well, okay. A lot of pressure. Uh thank you again so much. I really appreciate having a like an area where we can discuss ideas because informed voting is very important. Uh like I mentioned before, like my children, um when I was a little girl, I did not like to do chores. I avoided them a little bit, you know, with my sisters. Uh but my parents would always say, we do chores because we're part of a family. We are a part of humanity's family and we need to all step up and help each other during this time of crisis. It's terrifying. People are scared and lonely. Mental health is a real issue that needs to be normalized. Trauma is happening. I I am uh I believe that we need to help each other get out to vote. Um I I obviously would love to have a vote because it's gonna be a close election. I know some elections are like five votes difference. Uh please vote, vote for it, vote for who you think is the best candidate uh to help us through this crisis. I believe in wasteful uh to get rid of wasteful spending, but I also believe during a time of crisis, we also need to make sure we keep everyone head above water. We need to help the community because community is about people. Government is about people. The business, but without people alive, is there, we don't, we don't have, uh that's what we, our mission is. I believe that crisis, I've mentioned, I'm an educator. That is true. I've had experiences all over, but I'm also a builder. I said I wasn't a builder. I am. I build doors. I have built doors for opportunity in many habitat for humanity to uh work on those houses. I've worked in um the trench, uh uh working with special children with uh all abilities. Uh ha- uh national light out, I've built longer tables for inclusion. So I think we're all builders. We all can make more seats at the table. I I believe I've organized clothes, uh drives, fundraisers. I've done March times, Special Olympics. Uh I'm a drill scout leader, a lot of volunteers uh experiences because we need someone who's there in the trench who will put in the hours and will get things done during time of crisis to build a new opportunity for everyone to succeed. Vegas safe, please look at my my website, learn more, uh molly2020.com. Um but uh more so, I'm just saying I'm running for my children and for your children and for every children. I'm running for right now, the small businesses. I'm running for a better future. I'm gonna amplify the voices of the underrepresented and the those who are quietest in our society like children and elderly, but I'm also gonna uh speak for your voice and I'm gonna speak truth to power. So please vote, please vote, please vote. And thank you so much for all these wonderful opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder for everyone uh listening now or who has a chance to catch the recording of this virtual candidate forum slash town hall, primary elections, and the ballot will be held on August eleventh. Be sure to get to your polling place or get your absentee ballot in the mail as soon as humanly possible. All right, I'd like to, on behalf of Rochester builders, I'd like to thank all of our candidates uh from this session and previous sessions. Uh and thank you for your willingness to run. Um and uh we will see you at another point in time. Have a great rest of your day.
Security, create the conditions for